Welcome, everyone, to the May 20 City Council Work Session. And tonight, we continue on a very important topic, the homeless camping city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just turn over to Mark Schonin, who will continue the conversation from before.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pearson, members of the council. So this follows up our council work session from April 24th on homeless camping in the city's parks and open spaces. And at that meeting, there was four options presented to the city council. And three of those options are related to the section, the Gene Code, on permitted camping. And those are incorporated into the draft ordinance that is attached to your Agenda Item Summary. And then the fourth option is a request by Opportunity Village for the city to fund the conditional land use fees of approximately $7,500 for the Garfield micro housing project. So I wanted to walk through the ordinance, which again is Attachment A, and the four options that are embedded in that ordinance. So on page one of four of the draft ordinance, there's a proposal to, and it was the first option from last month that we discussed, it was a proposal to increase the number of car campers permitted from three to six, and to continue to allow both tents and Conestoga Huts as part of that car camping program. And then the second option was the one that was modified by council motion a month ago, and that's shown on pages of two of four and three of four of the draft ordinance. And that would allow dusk to dawn camping, defined as 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., not more than 10 people or five vehicles at any particular site, no provision for garbage, sanitary, or security services, and it would be allowed on property owned by the city, religious institutions, nonprofits, or businesses on property zone, commercial or industrial. And it stipulates that the city manager would designate up to eight sites by administrative order and establish it as 120-day pilot program. For the city-owned properties, we started with the analysis that was done last fall as part of the Opportunity Village discussion that ended up with the selection of the Garfield site for a micro housing project. The criteria at that time was properties greater than one acre in size, transit within a quarter mile, and in excluded parks. So back in October of last year, 16 sites were presented to the city council. The Garfield site was selected. The City Hall site was excluded from further consideration, and the Courthouse Triangle site has since been sold to the credit union for development of a credit union on that site. So of the remaining three sites, or excuse me, 13 sites are shown on the four maps in the four quadrants of the city, and they're shown in purple. And I wanted to, some of those sites, there was issues with it that have come out in the work that we've done since this past month. So Sites 1, 2, and 3, which are on Commons Drive and Martin Luther King Boulevard, they're in the vicinity of 105 and west of Garden Way. Those sites are all owned by Eugene Water Electric Board, they're not owned by the city of Eugene. Site 5, which is Applewood, there's two properties, there are two sites there, and those two properties are landlocked, there's no, there's no street access, there's no way to access those properties without trespassing over private property. Site 6 is Candlelight Park, or excuse me, Candlelight, and is a drainage way, so it's not available as a camping area. Site 11 is Spring Boulevard, has roughly 10% slopes, and as it provides a trail connector, a multi-use trail from Spring Boulevard up to Central Avenue. And so those seven of the 13 aren't viable sites. The remaining six sites include two land bank sites for low-income housing, one on Willow Creek, Site 9. Site 4 is on County Farm, just south of Parkview. And Site 4 has an assigned development agreement at this time with the city, St. Vincent de Paul, and the Housing Authority. Site 7 is the Armory Site. Site 8 is North Terry. Site 10 is Breezewood, and Site 12 is Laurel Hill. And then to this, we added 13 parks and open spaces, and they're shown in green on the four maps, along with the park name on the map. And most, excuse me, most of the parks are a combination of sensitive area and future park development. For example, the Golden Gardens Project, that's several hundred acres, but part of it is to develop park, we completed with this past bond measure around the ponds. A good share of it, we have leased to farmers for hay or seed crops, but there is an 11-acre parcel that's in the southeast corner of that that would be viable. And then the last part of the ordinance is that the city manager would be directed to select up to eight sites through the administrative order process. The third option was to remove or extend the sunset on the Conestoga Hut ordinance, and that's on page four of the draft ordinance. So the sunset for that provision, along with the pilot program, would be November 1st of this year, and that would allow sufficient time after implementation of the 120-day pilot to evaluate how the success of that program, make it permanent, revise it, or abandon it altogether. And then the fourth option was the request by Opportunity Village for the city to pay the conditional land use fees. And subsequent to, after preliminary accounting of the council contingency fund, that's pretty much run dry with the expenses of the May election and other, to date. So there's really not council contingency available for that. And in addition, all of you received, I think, an email from Dan Bryant wishing to delay any decision on that until they've had a chance to review it more themselves. So the recommendations are to move the draft ordinance to a public hearing, along with the sites that have been identified, and there was not a recommendation on whether or not to fund the conditional land use fees. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Just for the record, I'd like to share what was in that communication that we had from Dan Bryant. He said, "We originally pledged to ask for no more financial assistance from the city other than the use of the property. We specifically do not want any way to take funds which otherwise could go to other human services. When we began this work, we did not anticipate having to obtain a conditional use permit or know of the funds it would take to do so. When I presented our plans to the local chapter of Architects Association, AIA, several recommended that we seek some way around these fees. We inquired with city staff and were informed that the fees could not be waived, but we could request the city to find a means to pay the fees on our behalf. We later learned this apparently means taking funds out of the contingency fund. We are also aware that other agencies will be asking for support from this fund," which apparently we don't have. "We would prefer that any available funds be used for other human services, and especially those services that benefit the homeless. If at all possible, we would prefer some other means around these fees than drawing upon the contingency fund. If that's not possible, we would ask to postpone a decision so that we have time to consult with others about how we wish to proceed." I think that was a very generous communication, and I appreciate it very much. And just to start this conversation, I want to put these things out for your consideration. I'm concerned that we don't, in the language of the ordinance or resolution here, limit, the sites that are listed are good for consideration, but I would hate to do something that limited to those, because there might be something else that comes along that we don't foresee. And so having some kind of flexibility around that would seem wise to me. I also am personally interested in, if we're going to do this kind of program, we think of it, to some degree, like we think about our affordable housing program, where we have a dispersal policy, so we share the burden throughout, throughout the community. And I would hope you all would consider having some kind of dispersal policy as well, so that nobody feels like their part of the community is being targeted to bear the burden more unfairly. And then the other thing I wanted you to think about is, even while we're doing this, I am deeply concerned about some of the existing health and sanitation issues that are out there right now that I really can, I know we've been talking, and Greg brought this up last time, about having to transition people that are out there camping, but we have some places, like around the Stewart Pond area, that are actually a pretty substantial health and sanitation hazard, and we probably should move on those sooner than later. So I just want to put that up for your consideration, that there may be some things that need us to act on them in the short run because they, for other reasons that are important. And other than that, I only want to say that it does, we've gotten a lot of good suggestions today, and I think you're going to be probably talking about those, but I would also say that the things people want us to consider seem to morph and grow every day. So there is some kind of parameter that's going to have to come around, how many steps we, how many bites we take of the apple at one time. So all of those are things that I've been thinking about and hope that you'll take into consideration today. So now, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your opening remarks there. I think you hit a lot of ground and framed the discussion really well. You hit on one thing in relatively clear specifics that I had written down here, is one that was important to me, having looked at this map. I've already received a number of phone calls and a fairly good-sized chunk of emails regarding some of these sites that have been picked. The piece that you brought up, and as Chris knows from all his work in low-income housing, is the housing dispersal policy is designed in order so that no particular part of the community bears an undue burden of extra services that are needed in some particular cases. As I look at these sites, over 20% of them are in my ward, and the vast majority are in North Eugene, and so I, I hope that we're able to consider a similar sort of policy as we, as we consider these locations. I personally think that we're better off going down the road that I, that I brought up last time, which is to build a volunteer network of those folks with private property who would be willing to allow individuals, and to put our work into the organization and structure of bringing people together, rather than choosing specific places and attempting to organize how those are run. I think we're inevitably going to run into some heartache doing so, and I think we'd be much better off to help connect people. I think that's probably what we're better at. I see the chief in the corner over there, and one of the pieces I wanted to talk about was to, was to allow him to answer a couple of questions here. The ordinance changes the number of folks at a particular site from three to six tents, cars, that sort of thing. As we grow in size on a particular parcel of the number of people that are clustered and with what I saw as almost a volunteer management structure at each, without, I don't know if there are hard rules that apply, my question is, what is that, what's the chief's point of view of that from the standpoint of any public safety challenges that he'll have to address at some point, I suppose? You know, we had a big camp, that created some problems. My question is, the larger we make small individual places for people to camp in groups, what are we bound to see?
Well, it has everything to do with the people that happen to camp there, and it's difficult to know what that's going to look like. The camp that we had in the park with Occupy Eugene movement was very different than what we see in the smaller camps around town. It's a dangerous lifestyle to live on the street. In the smaller camps, we see dangerous behavior. And so I would expect that without some kind of management of the safety, it'll be like those camps that are elsewhere in town. If we're talking about the city property sites, if that's your question.
I am, and I'm wondering, what sort of things do you typically, does the department typically respond to in existing camps? And then you would extrapolate to this.
We don't often get calls to those camps, but we do investigate crimes that occurred earlier there, and there are assaults, and rapes, and robberies, theft.
My question as well for city attorney, and I don't know that you can do it right now, is about any liability we bear on city property to set up such an environment.
Then I'll put you in next round.
Thank you, Mayor.
Want to talk about the liability issue before we move on?
Sure. As I think we advised when you were considering the Occupy Eugene at Washington-Jefferson, there's a, what we believe to be a minimal risk of liability. If something happens on our property, it's likely that if something goes wrong, we will be one of the defendants. If all we're doing is allowing somebody to camp overnight, the dusk to dawn, and we didn't do anything else, the likelihood that we would actually be tagged by a jury verdict is fairly small. The one exception to that is if somebody gets injured because they're walking somewhere on our property, it's dark after all, trip, hurt themselves, and they say, "Oh, well, the reason I got injured is because of some defect in the way the property is laid out," then that's a claim that would have greater viability. But if what you're talking about, or the kinds of liability issues that came up when the council was considering Washington-Jefferson, those really related to one individual injuring another individual, we think it's unlikely that the city would actually bear any liability for that. But again, if there's any lawsuit at all, we will be one of the named defendants, and there will be a cost to defending the city.
Thank you. George Brown, you're next.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, yeah, I totally agree with the mayor. I mean, whatever we decide, however many sites we decide on, if it moves forward, there should be, should be dispersed, should be spread all around, in all the, all parts of town. I have a question about the contingency funds. You said that there's zero left in contingency?
Yes.
And when will those be refurbished? In the new budget cycle, July 1st, so will, is that correct?
Yes, assuming the council appropriates dollars into the contingency, that would be July 1st.
And approximately, what was it? I don't remember what the total was last year.
Fifty, no, 30,000, something like that.
More than that.
Got dropped from the year before.
We can get back to you, I don't recall, but it's...
Okay, so we will, well, we will have money, we'll have something, when the new budget cycle starts, so I'm not too worried about that. Maybe, maybe council would decide to use it for that purpose, the Opportunity Village conditional use permit. There's some language in this proposed ordinance here that kind of, I think, works against the spirit of what we're trying to do, and I'm sure it was inadvertent. On page eight and nine, Section 1, says, the comment says, "The subsection would require that anyone sleeping overnight remove all his or her belongings at dawn, so that the site does not become a 24-hour site that would fall under subsection requiring trash and sanitary facilities." And I, I thought we discussed last, last time we met about this, was having a storage facilities, and having a porta potty and a small dumpster, so that the site doesn't become unsanitary, and so that people have a safe place to leave their stuff while out there, out taking care of their affairs. Because that's, the problem now is, all the unofficial sites, you know, there's no, there's no sanitation, and there's no provision for trash delivery. And so we're in this cycle, you know, and I, and that's expensive, too, to go in and clean, you know, kick people out, police have to go in and kick them out, and then they move somewhere else, and then someone goes in and cleans up the site, that costs money, and then they go to the new place, and they get kicked out again, and it's just this endless, this loop, you know? And I just see, we'd kind of be continuing that if we, if we don't provide for trash and sanitation, and lockers, really. Because they're kind of going to be like rest stops, a safe place to sleep, kind of on the R2-D2 model in Portland, where people don't, they're not there all day long, it's just, they're pretty much there to sleep and store their stuff, and then they come back at night. I don't know about the one in Boulder, but that might be a similar, I haven't had the time to study that one. That's, that's a comment. But I, I think that we should change that, and with whatever ordinance I'm on.
George, you want another round?
Yes, please.
Okay, Claire?
So I have to say, I'm not clear after that update on which sites are available and which aren't. So I don't know if there'd be a way for us to get a clear list of that right now, if we have the technology to type that up and put it out.
I could...
Or if you could just go down the list, that would be great.
Sure.
This list?
Built a printed list here.
The one on page 11?
So just saying which ones are viable.
Well, it seems easier to cross out, cross out the ones that are not viable.
Okay.
Okay, so all of Sites 1, 2, and 3, 5, 6, and 11.
Okay.
All the park sites are fine.
Okay, thank you.
2, 3, 5, 6, and 11.
Yes.
Midsay 4, too.
So my comments aren't in any particular order. So we got some input from the sleeps folks, and they were recommending the idea of hosts at various sites, which I think is a great idea, but I don't know that it needs to be part of the formal ordinance, so that's kind of a question, I don't know that I need a direct answer right now. You noted in the AIS that we hadn't talked about a limit on individuals on a site. I think the recommendation was 10, maybe, I think, 10 to 15, depending on the size of the site, I think no more than 15 on any one site, regardless of how large it might be. I agree with Council Brown about his concern. I don't know that we came up with a specific idea for storage, we were still pondering the challenges of meeting that need, and we don't know that we have funding to provide porta potties and trash receptacles, but I think that making an effort to find that and/or engaging with folks in the community who might volunteer to sponsor those at different sites, and then having hosts who would maintain those. I don't think, particularly for the park sites, I don't want people setting up a camp in the park sites, but I don't necessarily think they have to remove all their personal belongings. I think as long as any structure, there was no structure built or kept up during the day, that things were packed up and closed down, whether or not they had to pick up and leave with their stuff, I think is, you know, maybe that's a fine line in terms of how you craft an ordinance, but I think just prohibiting of erecting a structure or a tent and keeping that up after 7:00 a.m. or whatever our start time was for the end of camping. I also support the suggestion that regardless of what action we take on this, we might delay implementation till the end of summer and start the actual official program in September, so it's really serving that need of the winter months that were really difficult this year. And then I would like to see if we'd had some kind of ability that if we set this up, a program or a policy for diverting people from the other places that they are currently at that we're trying to ask them to leave from. And I'll probably take another round.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to echo both George and Claire's comments and add a little bit more to it. I think the sanitation provisions, we need to, you know, really focus on that, because this is one of the primary reasons that we are looking to try to set this program up, is to be able to get people a way that they can go to the bathroom, dispose of their trash, and, you know, be able to live somewhat of a normal life under the, under most abnormal conditions that you possibly can. I think that we have enough critical mass of the nonprofit, not-for-profit, excuse me, advocacy sector, to where we can develop some kind of collaboration, where we can have people underwrite those kinds of sanitation facilities and, and also the trash facilities. The public safety piece, I think is, we already have that as it is now. I think that one of the things that this program can do in its conception and its, you know, trial period, would be to set up a system where, you know, the folks can be screened to some extent, so that we can keep out those people who are, you know, chronic offenders, and people who prey on the homeless and the unhoused as well as the housed. And I think that the host program has some potential in terms of that kind of voluntary management structure. I don't think that we, we need to have a lot of, you know, quote-unquote, superstructure and infrastructure that the city has to provide, but I think that we need to have some type of collaboration that is organized and focused, that allows people to have that flexibility. And I think that we can also work out the issues around storage as well, and that could be another piece of the pie that we can work with some of our nonprofit agency and advocacy folks.
Betty?
Thank you. I think, well, I think what we really need is a shelter, and I think we could take a, follow the pattern of the, of sponsors where they have transitional housing, and it's only for a short time. But as far as the locations, first of all, I think it should be on a bus route, definitely there should be public transportation available. I think that's, and I really think they should be near where there are services that the people might use. I'd like the, in Reno, they have a shelter near a dining room, and it is right downtown, right by the railroad tracks downtown. And the people sleep there, and then they go elsewhere during the day. But as far, I think sanitation, as has been said by several people, is just absolutely essential for the health of everybody. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Really good work. I know this is not easy, and I am supportive, basically, of finding locations. For me, what I'm focusing on tonight is, for me, what's the real brass ring, and that's figuring out how we're going to finance this infrastructure. We talked before about the unhoused neighborhood, and how that, that's what this really is. And it's a neighborhood without infrastructure at this point, little bits and pieces. And so I'm thinking, what we've done before is we've, we've used one-time money to provide temporary infrastructure, and that's kind of what we're talking about now, as we identify places. We're still talking about one-time money to support infrastructure, whether it's bathrooms, garbage, you know, whatever. For me, the larger thing is, if you really want to create something that's going to have a substantive impact over a long term, you've got to create something that's self-sustaining, whether that's with ongoing money, or whether it's through contribution, or whatever. Because, yeah, we can fix a problem, and then the problem will just come back. And we'll be, we'll be constantly having to deal with this, and one-time money's not the solution. So I'm thinking, we need to be very smart about how we can address the issue of camping and infrastructure to support that, but in either a self-sustaining or an ongoing way. It's important we're having this conversation before we go into our budget process, because this will be among many other issues that we're going to be talking about that's impacting the city's budget. I'm intrigued with the idea of finding private partnership. I think that's the only way we can figure out any sort of a strategy that might have a self-sustaining capability, is if it's in some sort of partnership. So I would like to pursue how that could go. My concern about, and this is what Dan Bryant's point is, about... Bryant's point is, about competing for dollars with the current nonprofit sector is, many sectors of the economy have been recovering, but the nonprofit sector has not. Nonprofit organizations are still going under. They're run out of money. And so, to expect that they could take any more hits would not be right, would not be accurate. So, whatever it is we do, it can't be at the expense of already crippled nonprofit organizations. They're in a very desperate state. That puts additional strain on our one-time money, puts additional strain on how we're going to, you know, be creative. So, I'm supportive of the work we're doing, and I want to keep moving down there. I'm acting as the voice of, kind of reminding us, this is all just temporary. If we want to do anything that has any sort of ongoing substance to it, we've got to figure out what our strategy is going to be for financing that infrastructure on an ongoing basis, and that is not an easy conversation. And I think we don't want to lose sight of how important that conversation is.
Alan?
So, we actually did, look back at my notes, we actually did discuss toilets and garbage. And what we were told was that St. Vincent de Paul sites cost about $1,000 a year per site to provide garbage and toilets. So, if we did half a year, 120 days, times six months, times $500, half of that, times 19 is $10,000, which we don't have. And so, we don't have a city source for that. I think it's a good idea to see if we could get private contributions for that. That's tough, but then, as Counsel Prior said, it starts to compete with the other things that we need to do. I think, I thought the whole idea here was to not to have camping, and therefore, you wouldn't need to have, or not to have permanent kind of camps, therefore, you wouldn't need to have the sanitation. It would be dealt with in a different way, and we could probably look into how that could be bolstered so that it works. But also, because it's not camping, I think Counsel Soretta, that having the items removed is also really important. What I imagine seeing is, if it's unclear what can be left there and what can't be left there, and how would you define that? If some stuff's left there, how would, and there would get complaints, and how would it get enforced? And what would the cops, oh, you left that, you left a cup, you left, you know, you left your backpack or all your stuff. I mean, I think just having it be kind of black and white makes it a lot more clear for everybody, and it's probably the way to go. If we didn't do that, we'd get a lot more complaints. That would increase tremendously. Again, this is all just a Band-Aid. It's, I think the real partial answer is the microhousing project that we have at Garfield, and seeing, and making sure that that works, and then expanding on it. I like the idea of the dispersal around, and I don't think the September date's really a problem, because by the time we get through this process of holding a public hearing and then having to go into effect 60 days after that, it'll be September.
Kind of gets that way magically.
You just add up the dates, and it's easy to get there. And thanks staff for bringing this back, and especially identifying the sites and bringing back an ordinance. That's really clear with some good trade-offs. I think one of the things that we have to make clear is that the motion was 10:00 to 7:00, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and some people suggested 9:00 to 7:00, and the ordinance says 9:00 to 7:00. So, I'm going to make sure that we got that right. I don't care either way. I think it's fine.
So, I think the toilet issue is a serious one, because I think expecting people to be on a property for 12 hours and not have access to a place that you want them to go to the bathroom is not a good idea. I think we're set it, and I would even suggest that as you look at this, you say that we don't set up a site unless we find a way to, through partnerships or whatever, we find a way to have a toilet on that site. That seems crucial to me. I think the property issue that Alan was just talking about, I mean, the reason people carry their stuff with them everywhere is because they can't leave it somewhere unattended because something will happen to the things that they have. So, that's why they carry their stuff with them all day long, everywhere. So, we wouldn't be solving anything by saying, leave yourself your stuff here. So, that's a, you either have to, you're either going to have to take it with them, or you're going to have to provide a safe place for them to keep it. So, it's one or the other. That one is still a difficult one. I wish we could answer it, but to me, it's not as crucial as a basic sanitation issue. It is an important one, but it's not as crucial as that. I'm going to go second round here, and I'll start with Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the issues that's unclear for me is that I have heard several folks, and I've read several emails, talking about screening folks who would be able to stay there, and talking about hosts. I don't see that in the ordinance. What I see in the ordinance is a very different sort of animal. The ordinance speaks to this process as what individuals are able to do on land either owned by the city or owned by individuals, and that the landowner is responsible for the activity on the premises, essentially. So, those city-owned spaces would be something we would be responsible for organizing in some manner of this process of hosts and screening. Do I have that right?
Well, the host idea came up over the weekend. It wasn't one proposed by staff. The way the ordinance is laid out is that there would be no, really no city involvement for sanitary wastewater or security.
Okay, so, I want to be really clear about that. Well, that's the part that's troubling to me, is because we're having a lot of conversation about how we're going to address the issue, but what I'm hearing is the city isn't involved legally and in the ordinance in the effort at all.
So, let me see if I can clarify. Most of your conversation today has been around what sounds to be like city-owned sites, but the motion was broader than that. It's that you just said, Mike, it involves city-owned sites, and other sites, whether you call it owned by individuals, it's really owned by a nonprofit, owned by a religious institution, owned by a business, as long as the business is located in a commercial or industrial area. If the council decides that sanitary facilities, trash facilities are a requirement in order for someone to have one of these sites, that is a very different structure legally in my mind from what we presented here. Because what you were talking about before was the dust-to-dawn camping, where if I own a business and I want to allow a couple people to drive onto my parking lot at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, and sleep there in their car, pitch a tent, and then leave by 7:00 AM, I would be able to do that. If you change it to say that there needs to be trash, there needs to be sanitary facilities, then the number of people who may be willing to do this will go down, because now there is a cost to me as a property owner to allow somebody to come onto my site. And my understanding is the reason why St. Vincent has had a hard time getting more of the, you know, three-vehicles Conestoga hut sites, is because of the requirement to have trash and to have a porta-potty. So, you can certainly add that to the ordinance. And part of what we're hoping, by the way, is if the next step in this process is a public hearing, is that you actually give us direction as to how you would like the ordinance modified. Give us that direction tonight so we could modify the ordinance before the public hearing. If you're not ready to do that tonight, then my recommendation to you is, we don't have as the next step a public hearing, but we have another work session so that we actually get your direction as to what goes into the ordinance. This was our attempt to take the conversation you had that didn't involve anything other than the one motion from Alan, and try to add some specifics to it, so you would have something to shoot at. If you're not ready to change this, keep having the conversation, but then don't have a public hearing on an ordinance that really isn't what you want to put out to the public.
Well, here's, I appreciate that answer, and that's broader than I was looking forward with this, but you hit the central point, which is that we're unfocused on what we're actually creating with this, with the discussion that I'm hearing, or at least, that's the way it seems to me. It seems to me that this ordinance proposes a certain type of structure, and we're talking about it as if we're trying to create something entirely different. And that leaves me with some discord about how that actually works. For example, as I brought up, the issue around hosts and screening, and who's responsible to do that, and what are the criteria, and who can be excluded, and under what conditions. These are legal criteria once the city gets involved in that process. Do I have that right?
Correct. So, there, again, there would be a difference between a city-owned site and all other sites. For all other sites, it would be the property owner. For city-owned sites, if you say there should be...
May I interrupt you? So, if it's not a city-owned site, a property owner could discriminate, for lack of a better word, or could set criteria based on anything they like, right?
A private property owner could choose whatever basis they want for deciding who can come onto their property to camp overnight.
So, the only ones that were, that fit into the capacity and kind of the conversation that's been had via email is for the city to do it, on the city-owned ones, right?
If we're talking about screening criteria that would go into the code, then yes, those would be on city-owned sites.
Do we face, what sort of liability question, this is where I was headed before, what sort of liability issues do we face in saying, you can stay here and you can't stay here? Do we face issues of lawsuits from that in a likely, I mean, I don't know what that looks like.
Depending on what kind of criteria you would have in mind, there certainly is a greater likelihood of a lawsuit. We would need a criterion that is very objective. You have, for example, and I'm not saying this would be the right one, but you have been convicted of one of the following crimes. That would be objective. There would be a cost to running the report to see whether somebody...
Going to say, we're going to need staff then in order to do the screening process, yes?
Absolutely. And if your criterion isn't that objective, but instead is, this person's been a troublemaker, we can't have that as a criterion. It needs to be objective, something that somebody can go to and say, yep, okay, they were convicted of X.
I think this is deeper than we have begun...
Another round, Mike?
Yeah, I'm back to the volunteer coordinate. So, thank you. I'll take another round.
So, I've got George Brown, Claire, Craig, and Alan, Greg and Alan. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, one thing I, thank you for providing this, by the way. It's a very useful start, but I can see that we're not anywhere close to having a product for a public hearing yet, and I think we need to rework this and boil down the sites. And I'm just, I mean, maybe we could have the public hearing in July, and that'd still be two months before this theoretical September 15th start, so I think that'd be enough time. I just want to kind of go back to the cost of the porta-potties and the mini, and say, like a mini dumpster. Was that $1,000 a year? Was that the figure that, was that correct? And we're talking about eight sites. Is that correct? Well, that's the total. No, I think we're only talking about maybe eight or 10...
Half a dozen, eh?
To actually have. So, I'm thinking, you know, $8,000, $10,000 a year for that. And I really think that the sanitation is absolutely essential to the success of whatever we do. And I really like the idea of lockers. And, you know, it's like, the rule could be pretty simple. You know, you wake up in the morning, and you roll everything up and put it in your locker, and exit the site, and come back to sleep. They're kind of like envisioned as rest stops rather than, we're not talking about setting up something like Dignity Village or Tent City 3 or 4, you know, in Seattle, like a permanent thing. We're going to try that at Opportunity Village and see how that works. And this is just to have people with a safe place to sleep. So, and I'll just tell you, I, you know, I visited the ones in Portland and Seattle. I visited all of them, and city staff confirmed this. There was never, they never had one incidence of violence in Seattle at all three camps. And they have, the hosts and the responsible people are kind of self-selected at those places, too. I don't know how that would work, and I don't know how the screening would work. But I had a question. I wonder, did Jean Stacy send you a copy, you and her memo that she sent the councilors, listing other possible sites?
Yes.
Did you see that?
Yes.
I just had a question. I know the city owns other, owns the little parkland all around, and they're not all parkland. Some of it's, a lot of it's surplus property, little odds and ends. Were any of these city-owned? Did you have a chance to...
I believe they're all city-owned, and some I believe, so I started with the work that was done last, from last fall, and that had a criterion of one acre or greater. So, I think some of them fall under an acre. Like, the property at the corner across from the federal courthouse, I believe, is under an acre. And then, some are properties in the West Eugene wetlands that in that email are characterized as dry wetlands, but they're still part of that wetland complex. So, there's some viable sites in that list that are just a little bit smaller, and then there's some that aren't viable.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, my, the point of that was, is like, we could, I think, if we combined both of these lists of the ones that, you know, that you provided and this one that was provided for us, then we could probably come up with about 12 or 14, maybe 15...
George, another round?
...viable sites. Yes, please.
We have time. All right, Claire?
Thank you. So, I also am feeling like maybe we're not ready to go to a public hearing, but we could, in theory, pass some, excuse me, some form of this proposed ordinance and then allow some of the things that we're talking about. So, we could pass it without the requirement of there being trash or porta-potties, and then work to support some program that would provide those. But that being said, you know, what I'm, I also think this is a, you know, an emergency solution to something, not a long-term project. I agree that a municipal or publicly-supported shelter would be much better than opening up places to sleep outdoors. So, we're trying to respond to a crisis, in a sense. And we started really with a request to lift the camping ban in all city parks, allow sleeping in the parks, and now we've got this concept of rest stops, which I think has some real value and is a good idea, but I don't know that the council's ready to really go there right now, that that might be a little beyond our capacity at this moment in time, and that maybe we should take the opportunity to provide the respite that was the original plea, as I heard it. And I also think if we're a little too restrictive about how we choose sites, I mean, I appreciate the idea of them being along transit corridors, but that might then make it too restrictive in terms of what's possible, and also not allow for dispersal. And I'm concerned about the sites as well. For example, on the list of undeveloped parks is Ferndale, which is maybe technically an undeveloped park, but the volunteers in the neighborhood have developed the park. And I would not support having that be one of our designated sites. And I've also received emails from folks adjacent to the West Bank area, who've also put in a lot of sweat equity into that area, even though it's not officially developed by the city. So, I was curious about the sites that had been included to us from Jean Stacy, and included in there was Bloomberg. I was wondering if that, with you used that screening criteria that we'd had for the potential Opportunity Village sites, so is that why some of these were not included on your list, or other reasons?
Well, so, I only looked at the city parks. I looked at the list that was developed last fall as part of the Opportunity Village, and then pulled off some, for example, the ones that were owned by E-Web, and then worked with park staff to identify the city parks. And we've talked about, this afternoon, talked about Bloomberg. That's potential. It's in unincorporated county.
Oh, okay.
We have used it for composting leaves in the past, but it's a fairly large site.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm familiar with it. We walk our dogs there occasionally. And although it's not near services necessarily, and folks would have to pass through the neighborhood that, you know, is along that route, it's actually very isolated and fairly dry. So, in some ways, it offers a lot while it doesn't have other things. So, I would be interested in looking more deeply at some of these sites that were proposed, that maybe didn't meet the criteria of the Opportunity Village, which was a very specific project, maybe.
Maybe.
[laughing]
Greg?
Can I add one? If Bloomberg, that's the name of it, if that's outside city limits, we have, you have no authority to change the county code that governs that site. Even though we may own it, we're... Even though we may own it, we're subject to county regulations. So, what we can change, what you can change, is the city code, and so we're really talking about sites located within the city limits unless the county code would already authorize this.
Greg, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I want to say, I'm, I'm very, you know, sensitive to the concerns that Councilor Clark has raised in terms of liability and some of the other complex issues that go along with this, but I want to remind us of a couple of things. One, that this is a pilot program, it is a trial. And as with anything that is a trial, you are, we know that there's going to be some bugs that have to be worked out of it, and I don't want us to get too involved in terms of overthinking this, over-legislating this. I think that what we need to do is, you know, take a step back, look to work with some of the advocacy groups that are out there in terms of crafting and, and manipulating the ordinance in a way that makes sense for us for this trial period, and looking at what collaborations we can develop as a result of this, so that we can kind of move forward with this. Because one of the, I, I try to focus not on the solution, but the problem. There is no solution for homelessness, not here in this city, not across the country, not unless everybody gets jobs and gets affordable housing magically, and there's nobody waving a magic wand to do that. So, it's going to be a lo, that's a long-term issue. What we're trying to do is to try to do something in the interim that tries to help the people who have been chronically homeless in this community to have some sense of stability and a little bit of safety, and some, and humane conditions in which they can, you know, go to the restroom and, you know, sleep during the night, undisturbed. So, I'm looking at, you know, not so much an, an idea of us, you know, for a, a, a program of exclusion, but we let, we need to look for a program of inclusion. And I'm trying to look at this as keeping this as simple as possible, creating a criteria for inclusion as opposed to so much in terms of exclusion. I think we do need to have some kind of criteria in place that does exclude what the city attorney has said, people who are convicted of, you know, these felonies cannot be part of this program. And, you know, I also want to remind us that we're looking at limited number of sites, six to eight. We're not looking at 12, we're not looking at 24, we're just looking at a small number of sites as part of a pilot, so there's my two cents on this.
Alan.
So, I agree with Councilor Evans, I mean, these are difficult issues, and we need to be thoughtful and take our time, and I agree that this is, we likely need another work session on this. And I also agree that we're close to burdening this idea with so much rules and costs that it makes it inoperable. And the idea here, in my mind, was to take baby steps, but not to solve all the problems all at the same time, so, and, which is why we proposed a pilot program. This proposal, even its rough form here, is immensely better than, than the current circumstance, and, and I don't know that we're going to solve all the issues we need to solve in order to move this forward. It's not perfect, it, it's an experiment on a world-class, hard problem. And, and so, I agree that we should look at this as a pilot program, minimally, put minimal rules around it, see how it goes, and, like not having a toilet in garbage, see how that goes. If we're worried about the impacts of it, let's shorten the timeframe from 120 days down to 90 days and take a look at it, or something more along that line. Because I'm worried about it not being able to be implemented because we put so much stuff on top of it. The, I think the host rules are a good idea, but that's one of those rules that probably doesn't work, and, and it, it's absolutely necessary on the microhousing project at Garfield, and we saw the article in today's paper about it. And, and I think we actually, Mark, we have two projects, one or two projects, I can't remember, about lockers that we've authorized funding for, right? Can you talk about those a little bit?
I'm not aware of those two, Michael West.
Michael can.
Yeah, we have two hosts, Catholic Community Services is hosting 18 lockers, and St. Vincent's Lynnholm Center is hosting 24 newly-built lockers.
Lost.
I haven't seen the receipts yet, for those that haven't drawn their funds on that yet, but they were given $10,000 to do that, and I assume that, no, no, total-
Total.
And I assume that it'll come in under the $10,000.
And those are pretty permanent lockers?
Yeah.
And they've taken six months to get?
Well, they've been-
By the time they get open and-
Well, they've been operating now for about two months.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm also confused about the six to eight number, I mean, Mark, I thought you said there's 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 11 of the Opportunity Sites, that's six, and then all the parks is another 13. Are we just artificially limiting this to eight? Because that's not in the ordinance either. Is it? I didn't see it, I looked twice.
In the ordinance, it stipulates that the city manager will select eight sites through an administrative, up to eight sites through administrative order process.
Where's that in the ordinance?
It gets on the last page.
Yeah.
Page three or four.
Section three.
Page nine. Okay.
Are you finished, Gavin?
Yeah.
Okay, Betty?
Thank you. I'm curious about what happens to the people who don't qualify for getting into the places. Where are they going to go? That's, and as for dispersal, I, I don't think that's, it sounds as if that's a burden that we don't want, that nobody wants. I still think a bus route, public transportation is absolutely essential, in my opinion. And then I have a question about, I was just given this sheet as I walked in, about $300,000 for park cleanup, is that money still around?
Well, that, that's part of the, the park's operating budget. A portion of it is, well, probably half of it is stormwater money that's focused on water quality issues from homeless camps on the West Eugene wetlands and along the river corridors. So, that, that money's, no, it's not available, it would be a cut in, in park operations.
Oh, this, I just got this, it says $300,000 budgeted for park cleanup of homeless camps could be used to pay for facilities.
Right, I think at the May, or at the April 24th work session, I said, that's what we estimated cost the park operation group to manage homeless camps within the parks and open space system, the staff cost, right? But, but I don't have any illusion that that, regardless of what this ordinance does, is that problem isn't going to go away in the, the parks and open spaces.
They'll still be there.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all.
So, I just want to say that I, I think, as we talk about this, it begins to morph into something that feels more permanent, and, and I think what we're trying to do is create something for right now to help with the situation, but I think we, we also are looking down the road and saying, "Well, next step is, does that Garfield site, is that a pilot that works, which is better than, than this notion"? And then if, in fact, I feel like if, if you really think both the Garfield site and this kind of rest stop are really inadequate, and you ought to be aiming at what will really, you think, make a bigger, and I don't mean now, I mean, in, in the long run, be strategically aiming to do what you think would make a real difference, that you'd want on a long-term basis to deal with this, and that's a very different ques, I just see these as different emergency, minimal, and then what do you really want to do to, to solve the issue? And we ought to be sort of thinking about it in that way. If we spend so much time honing in on these sites, you will create another class of permanent sites, and, and that's, that's a choice you would be making, but that's, that's an, that's an issue, that, that's an issue. So, at any rate, I think the, if you choose to go forward with this, giving the city manager some flexibility, giving him direction about what your goals are, but giving him some flexibility, go out there and figure out which spots would meet those, your goals best, instead of you trying to figure out which spots they would be, you give him, you tell him how you, what you want, and then let him go work with staff and see which ones really work out for that, because this is a very complicated deal here, as you can tell from just putting our, our toes in it. I also wanted to say that the women's shelter, the new women's shelter at the Mission has 80 lockers, so they're working on the locker issue as well. So, I think we have to think not just in terms of what we're doing, but how what we're doing fits into what's happening with this issue all over the place, and, and, and I think we should probably think that as we start out in this, should you choose to do this, you're going to probably start out with a couple of sites and figure out how those work, and then add to it as you, as you need to, but they're not all going to come up at one time, I wouldn't think, because I think that would be really, really hard to do. So, just thinking about those, thinking about where you, where you want to go in the long run, where this really should fit in that spectrum, and then what's the, what's the minimal thing that would help with this emergency thing right now, and give people a place to sleep, a legal place to be, and not let our nitpicking it undermine being able to do anything. So, third round, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to be clear, I'm not trying to nitpick at this, I want to solve the problem. I want us to have a constructive conversation about what'll actually work, and I have, I have some very large concerns that this won't. I, I don't think we're headed the right direction with this, I think there are some inherent conflicts in this. For example, at least half the people who've talked about this said, "We're trying to create a safe place for people to sleep." If you're not going to screen who's there, how, how in the world are you saying it's safe? There's, if, if it's for anybody, it's for anybody, and that's the problem we ran into, that's one of the problems we've run into before, and a lot of the volunteers and the folks who've been working very hard on this have talked about it in terms of creating a place where there is some screening so it can be safe of who's there. But then we run into two issues, authority to screen, and authority to decide who, and authority to create criteria, and whether or not, if it's going to be the city, we have the money to administer- So, for me, I, I'd hate to see us spend multiple meetings having arguments about stuff that has inherent conflict to it. I think that there's an opportunity for us to create a real solution around private property opportunities that are not public, and for the city to operate as a clearinghouse for information for those people who would like to allow people to camp at some property that they own, and for us to become the central database, the central clearinghouse, and maybe have someone whose job it is, is to check in and say, "You can go here, you can go there, there's a place over here for you, there's a place over there for you." I, I think the issues around liability that we face, once we start opening up our city-owned properties, and the, the manner in which we're talking about conducting this are going to be too great. For example, we're talking about Santa Clara Community Parkland as though that's an option when it's directly adjacent to a school. And once that conversation starts about having folks camp and directly adjacent to a school, we've had that experience before in South Eugene, it'll be the same experience again, I promise. So, I, I just want to see us have a productive conversation, and I genuinely don't imagine that what we're, what we're suggesting so far will accomplish our best outcomes that we've said we wanted.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, you know, I'm all for people volunteering to let people stay on their property, but so far, they're not doing that. It's just faith-based organizations that are, are leading the charge there, and I just don't see a lot of private property owners sending us emails and knocking down the door to say, "Yeah, I'll take 25 people on my five-acre", it's not happening, so, I mean, we need, I really feel that we need to do something, otherwise, so what? So, it costs, you know, $7,000 for the conditional use permit, and if we do eight sites, that'd be $8,000 a year for sanitary. That's peanuts compared to what we're spending dealing with the unaddressed situation. I mean, I don't even know how much it costs to go in and clean up along the river, and what police time is, you know, kicking people out, but I bet us a lot more than $15,000, which is a total of eight and seven, I mean, you know, so I, I really feel that we need to do something to break this cycle, and I would suggest that we do a little more, work, work with advocates, they've come up with a lot of great solutions, work on this, this proposed ordinance, I see some flaws in it, and it could be better, but we've, you know, we have a couple of months to do that, we've got time to do this, and do it in a thoughtful manner, and, and see these, the city sites and the park sites and the Opportunity Eugene sites, try to hone it down to, say, like, 12 sites for the public hearing, and then people will come and tell us, I mean, it'll be posted, they'll come and tell us why, why they don't think one or the other would work, or why it might work. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised, they get some positive feedback on some of them. So, I'm just curious, why couldn't the ordinance say, you know, like, one thing for the faith-based organizations and one for a city-owned site? Why couldn't the city screen people? I mean, I, doesn't Saint Vincent de Paul, or, don't they do background checks on people? Don't, don't, or do they? I mean, I don't really know, is anyone here that would know?
Well, they will for certain sites, in close proximity to a school or like a youth recreational area, so it's usually-
Have a criminal background check.
Yeah, and it's not for every site, though, it's just for more sensitive-
Okay, well, see, they're already doing that, and there's no reason why the city couldn't do that, too, or whoever was the responsible, responsible party at the site. I mean, I don't, it's already happening, to just say that it can't happen is kind of avoiding reality, so, I mean, it, you know, and, and, and there should be, I mean, you, you obviously, this is the problem that happened at, at Washington Jefferson Park, all populations were all mixed in together, was inappropriate, people with unaddressed mental health issues and unaddressed, you know, addiction issues cannot be in with, with families and, and people that are just unhoused with no issues, it's, it won't work.
Claire? Thank you. Yeah, I, I, this is a challenging one, I think it's, when I originally envisioned this idea, it wasn't with any screening of people, we don't currently screen people who use our parks during the day, and there are folks, you know, however you feel about them, registered sex offenders, who find it very, very challenging to find a place to rent or live, and, and some of the folks who are sleeping out in Bertelson and other places probably fall into that category, and so we would still end up trying to solve a problem and still end up having those individuals scattered out in places that aren't fit for human habitation, and the same issue that we're trying to solve here. So, I'm not sure where I land on that in terms of the public spaces, I appreciate Councilor Clark's bringing up the issue of safety, you know, if we were able to expand this to more private places, those might be the places where there's more safety, and the public parks aren't, aren't necessarily a safe place to sleep, even if there is no camping ban on the books. I did want to address, the $300,000 for the cleanup is not budgeted, it's just what they've had to spend on doing that work, so it's taking away money that was probably budgeted for other purposes, and while this, you know, if we can relieve some of that burden, we will save some of those dollars, but I don't know that we can just do a transfer out of one budget into another for that. I would like to see another review of the proposed sites without the restrictive criteria that the Opportunity Village review had, because that was really trying to get at a particular kind of project, and this is a, a much more kind of broad scope that we're looking at, and I think if we are going to identify particular sites, we should be looking a, a little bit more broadly, but I guess we'll want to take out any that fall outside the city limits. That's all I've got for right now.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple more things. I think that, for me, when I look at this, I look at, you know, the face of the homeless as being substantially different than what some people do. I look at the women and the children who are out- I look at the women and the children who are out there on the street and have no place to go, and the number of students that we have in Four J and Bethel who are homeless is, you know, just absolutely criminal. No, we're not going to be able to solve that. But what we're doing right now, I want to point out, is not working. It has not worked. So, we've got public work staff scurrying around, trying to clean up behind, you know, the mess, the illegal messes that we have, and they can't keep up with it. The, you know, the police are burdened by having to try to, you know, cite folks for sleeping in places that they're not supposed to sleep. And we're shutting down restroom facilities in public parks that should be accessible to everyone, people who are using parks for recreation, as well as other things that they're doing, because we've got things going on in those bathrooms that shouldn't be going on anywhere. So, I think that if we don't try to do something constructive and creative, even though if it's on a small experimental scale, if it doesn't work, you shut it down at the end of thirty or twenty, one hundred and twenty days, and we go back to the status quo, and, you know, nothing has changed, and then we've got to look at other, you know, options. But I will point out, the cost of illegal camping is only going to increase, and our economy is not bouncing back enough for people to be able to, you know, get jobs out there and go to work. I will say this, in this environment, this day and age, you have to have an address to get a job. You have had, in some, a lot of cases anymore, you have had to have a, have a job to get another job. People don't want to hire people who don't have jobs. So, you know, we just got this circular thing going on. Again, I just want people to focus on the fact that this is temporary. I think it deserves to be vetted out a little bit more. And if, like I said, if it doesn't work, then we can shut it down, go back to square one. But the cost of what we're doing is going to just continue to go up, or not doing up, up and up, and it'll be far beyond our ability to manage it at that point.
Okay. Alan?
So, just to reiterate something that Claire said, the three hundred thousand dollars that we use to clean up parks is not cash, it's staff time. So, if we were to try to convert it into cash to pay for toilets and garbage, that means we'd have to reduce parks maintenance and reduce parks maintenance staff, which is really a bad idea, because they're not even keeping up as it is. And that's been a major problem for a long time, parks maintenance. So, that doesn't work at all, and that's the wrong place to go look for money. It sounds like what some people are doing here is trying to create permanent sites, and that's far from where we were trying to go. The permanent sites is what the microhousing project at Garfield is about. If that works, and there's not the issues and problems that people think or fear there are, and I think there won't be once we get it done and it works well, it'll be a good test case to be able to do that in other places and have more permanent-style places. This is about testing the lifting of the Dust of Dong camping ban for some people for a short period of time. It's a baby step. And I think we're trying to cram everything in there and solve this whole problem, and this isn't going to solve the problem. This is probably going to barely dent it. I've been working on almost problems for decades, and it's just gotten worse. But this is an opportunity to at least alleviate some of that burden those people have in just trying to find a place to sleep. So, and doing nothing just keeps all those costs, as Counselor Evans said, are going to go up, and all the bad things will just continue. And so, doing nothing's not really a very viable option. When it comes to this being a pilot program that's supposed to test baby steps of lifting that Dust of Dong camping ban, I think the staff got it pretty right. I think it's pretty darn close. I don't know, you know, maybe the only thing I would tweak is, we could talk some more about how we would do the sanitation part, or maybe the city, we give the flexibility for the city manager to pick the sites, but bring them back to council for approval. But other than that, I'm not sure I want to tweak too much more than that. I think we're just trying to overthink this a little bit. If we, if we're afraid that it's not going to work, then we shouldn't do it, or we should reduce the period of time that we're going to test it. It's from one hundred and twenty days to like ninety.
I think the current situation is untenable, and I think the pressures on where people are and the pressures on the environment and the situation that people are living in, both from a humanitarian perspective and a sanitation and safety perspective, we need to do something different. And I totally agree with that. If that's a premise we all agree on, then I think the question is, what can we do? And I guarantee you, no matter what gets chosen, there will be somebody who says, I don't want that here. So, I guarantee you, that will be something that you will face, no matter where it is. If you think you face it with affordable housing, hmm, this, so, I mean, I think you have to accept that as a burden of trying to do this. And I think getting down into the weeds of which one and which, which one and which not for the council to do is like begging everybody in the world to come to you and give you the five thousand reasons why that choice is a bad choice. So, setting the criteria, I think, is what you need to do, and then let, and then let our staff try to find the best place for that to be with the least negative impact on the folks who live around it and the city in general. If your decision is to move forward, I think that's, that's the best direction that we can go. Otherwise, I think we'll just be spinning and spinning and spinning. So, we have about ten minutes left. Anybody else got anything they want to say about, or I think, I heard you say you think you need to go back and come back and talk about this again. I did hear that. And city manager, do you have any thoughts from having listened to this at this point?
Several thoughts, but only a couple that are relevant at the moment. We want to make sure that when we come back next time, that we bring back additional information if there is. I've heard, we've heard about refreshing the site list based on some things. Some have said, don't use the criteria previously around transit routes, and some people have said, use that criteria. So, I, we can throw them all on there, and then you can decide that later. That's a possibility. So, I just want to make sure we do that. Was there any other particular information that you're looking for for the next conversation?
That might, and so, I'm just saying this, and these folks may have a very different opinion, but I, I'm thinking that there's the ideal, and then there's what you can't, you have to have. I think there's some space in there between the ideal and what you have to have. And so, just for you to think about that. You could say, ideally, it would be near transportation. But if we have a good site and it's not as close, well, it's still a good site. So, at least think about that.
So, we'll bring back a refreshed site list. But was there anything else in particular that you're needing for your next conversation?
Thank you. One, yeah, issues around liability. I think Alan brought up an interesting point here, which is the same one I've been making, is that there's a distinction between creating a permanent camp and what we're talking about here, which is just making it okay to camp there. We're not creating a safe place. We're not creating some place where people can be. What we're saying is, this is a place where you won't get arrested for camping overnight. But it means anybody can be there. And that changes the safety factor, because we're not checking on anybody. We're just saying, hey, everybody can be there. Okay? So, it's not, we're not guaranteeing it's safe. I absolutely, under those conditions, one of the criteria has to be, and I know it's self-serving to people in my ward, but can't be next to a school. We're not going to make any effort at all to say, these folks can be here and these folks can't be here. It can't be next to a school.
With the refreshed list coming back, we're not going to be, we haven't heard all the criteria coming from the council yet, so we're just kind of bringing back a list of potential sites, which eventually, I would anticipate, if there's some criteria that you give to us, to come back for a more finalized list.
One of the other things that Mark was kind enough to bring up were the, you know, sites one, two, and three are owned by E-Web, Dapplewood's Landlocked. Those, that was helpful information. I think it would be more helpful for us if we're going to be asked to sign off on a particular or particular sites, that we have more criteria of information around any of the issues that we've brought up already or others. So, we can all give you lists of criteria that are important to us, but that's going to be important.
Mark?
Well, I mean, either we're going to make, well, I agree with you, Mayor. And Mayor, I agree with you, and that's exactly the point. Either we're going to, either we're going to talk about each of the locations, or we're not. Either we're going to talk about the criteria, or we're not. And I think it's important that we do, because the community expects that we do, and it's not going to be easy. And forgive me, but I come back around to, that's why I think we should separate it and do this where we're the coordinator of an individual private effort there, where people will allow camping on their property.
Greg?
One other thing I would add to that list would be what, to go back and look at what the nonprofit, not profit, profit and for-profit communities are willing to do in collaboration around this. And I mean, not necessarily the city ordinance fix, but, you know, where we can, you know, fill some holes, where folks are willing to step up and pay for certain facilities, you know, and also looking at a variety of systems of minimal management that, you know, needs to happen, that can happen from that side of the aisle, I think is important, because we all know what financial fiscal limitations that the city is under right now. And we also, going back to Counselor Clark's issue, we want to minimize risk and exposure. So, I think that we really need to look at a collaborative approach, and if, you know, staff can reach out to that community and look at shaping some other parts of this that we've discussed that would be non-staff oriented, I think that that would be real helpful in terms of looking at how successful the pilot can be. We won't know anything unless we try it first. So, there.
We can get some of that information. The one thing, and several of you brought it up, it feels like there's just a fundamental difference on what the program is going to look like, either kind of a, it's open for the night, first come, first served, and then you kind of work that way, which is different than sort of a permanent reservation where everybody has their own locker at the site. And so, it feels like that's also a piece that has to get resolved, which then also helps decide what is the collaboration effort, which I agree with, that we'd be asking for into the community, is it people to host, or is it people to kind of manage and so?
I suggest, John, that before we talk about this again, that we try to flesh out what questions need to be answered and just pose questions and get, specific questions and get answers. Because otherwise, we'll all keep talking about our opinions, but in fact, we won't get to where the majority of council wants to go. So, maybe we can figure out what, with your help, what those questions that you need to have, with your help and with your help, what those questions are, and then everybody can be prepared to come and answer those questions, and then we'll be able to make some move forward. Okay.
George?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, we're talking about the expenses and everything. And of course, we're not sure what the total expense will be. But I'd just like everybody to think back a few months ago when the community stepped up big time and made very generous donations for the Conestoga Huts. And I feel that once we have some kind of a program in place, I feel certain the response will be the same. There's so many people that are just itching to help out on this problem, both monetarily and volunteer-wise. I think we'll be amazed at the public response once we came up with a decent program. Thanks.
Yes, I would, one more thing I want to add to that is, one of the things that's happened with some of the church congregations is they, they have done as much as they can on their own property. That doesn't mean that they don't have people that are willing to do more in other ways if we have a way for them to do that. So, and I think that's what you're saying, but I, and I think that's what you're saying, is that we just create some options of how people can be supportive and that we will help make that happen. Yeah. Hmm? Yeah.
Only that.
Right. All right. I think we're done for today. Right? All right. [applause][1789.65]